Carrie? Do you want to get started?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Let me know when you're ready.
Recording in progress.
This is the regular meeting of the Dyton Planning Board. Today's Wednesday, January 15th at 7:00 PM, Old Town Hall. This is a public meeting with both video and audio recording for broadcast on cable and Dyton YouTube channel. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to confirm our next meeting date, which is going to be February 5th at 7:00 PM here at Old Town Hall. The first item of business, I'd like to take out of order if we can, item 2B, Review Discuss Act on Affordable Homes Act Amendment. If we can take that out of order, if someone would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Jim, I don't know if you want to present or how we want to do this? Okay, if you want to convene?
We'll have to open your name.
Okay, do I make the motion? Do I make the motion that we open the Dyton Planning Board hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Hello, everyone. James Agia, building official. So, yeah, I'd like to have a healthy discussion about this new ADU law that's come down from the state. I think most of you know that Dyton was sort of ahead of the curve. We have a bylaw already in place. The bylaw was well-written. It was co-authored by myself and several others years ago, and it's been used successfully to help families beat some of the housing crunch that families feel. I've even had new construction homes use the ADU bylaw that we currently have on the books when constructing new houses. So, I think it's a positive thing. I think the way we wrote the bylaw was, had some controls. The law certainly loosens those controls up. Now, we've sort of been handcuffed in some aspects that we're not allowed to change certain things of the law, but the state has given us the opportunity to limit how many ADUs can be on a property. They've also some other parameters that they've given us graciously the ability to condition these things. We cannot, however, stop them. I don't think that's the intent of Dyton, considering we have a bylaw already. I can tell you in a nutshell, the biggest difference between the bylaw we have now and the law is detached accessory dwelling units are allowed by right, whereas right now that's not allowed. The other thing is that there's a lot allowance where anyone with a 20,000 square foot lot or larger can have an ADU accessory dwelling unit as right. So, that sort of conflicts a little bit with what we have on the books now. Our attorney, Mr. Toleman, sent over some correspondence, which you may have, which were some suggestions that could be made to the bylaw. I would like us to do two things. I'd like us to take our time and not rush through any bylaw changes to make sure that we don't conflict with the state law. But in doing that, I want everyone to know that as of February of this year, which is next month, if someone comes into my office for an ADU that conforms with the law, I need to give them a permit. So, with that said, I want everyone here, planning board, zoning board, everyone at home, to know that although I support the accessory dwelling unit option, I will be implementing aspects of the state building codes to interpret what I think is accessory dwelling unit. And what I mean by that is I'm not going to allow someone who buys something off the Internet or someone who wants to convert a Codex box or a storage box into a dwelling unit. I'm going to make sure that whatever they propose meets the definition of a structure in the building code. So, that said, I will have some controls over what permits are issued until we can get the bylaw to fall in line with what the law and what Dyton wants to see in the future. I would say that although I'm willing to do that, I may not be here forever. So, I would suggest that as part of our revamping of the law, we may want to define what we want. I may be wrong. You may want Codex boxes as dwelling units. The people ultimately are going to vote on this, but in, you know, I just think that we need to be careful because there are a lot of things out there on the market right now. You know, the Internet sells these things that are all folded up. They come on your, to your house on a skid. They open up. None of it meets any of the building code requirements. So, I'm going to use my empowerment through the building code that anyone who comes into my office, whatever they propose, has to meet certain conditions in the code, Chapter 10 especially, which is means of egress, emergency escape, and things like, you know, proper ceiling heights, room sizes, things like that. So, that'll be a stopgap for us until we can get this bylaw fixed. But I would encourage us to take our time, do it the right way. I would like to see it on for the town meeting in June, which I think we have enough time to do. But I wanted you to know that that was my intent as the building commissioner to try to eliminate some of the frenzy where people want to put these things on their property. And if they do, they're going to comply with the code.
So, am I right that today, and maybe this is because today there's a special permit involved or an application, that a site plan review is required in our bylaws? No? We don't require that in our bylaws?
No, we do not.
Okay.
No, because it's a residential use, our site plan review is strictly for commercial use.
Commercial, okay.
So, we do have right now a Board of Appeals involvement with any detached. That will go away. Detached will be allowed as right.
And what is the setbacks? Is it same setbacks?
It would be the current setbacks that the municipality currently has, so they wouldn't have to meet all the parameters of Appendix A in our bylaws now. So, you know, the law wasn't haphazardly written. I think they did a good job. Ironically, I think they actually read the bylaws that were in the books already in cities and towns, ours in particular, because a lot of our language is in it. But that said, I think we should look at this seriously. I don't know what Dyton wants for its future, but I would not like to see multiple accessory dwelling units on a property. I also think the 20,000 square foot rule is crucial, because if we have small properties, we have some in town that are less than 20,000 square feet. I'm not sure that that's appropriate to have an accessory dwelling unit on. So, I would like to see us to try to take the state law and then adapt it with some conditions allowed by law to make sure that we cite these things and permit these things appropriately. I think it can be a positive thing for the town or a positive thing for the people who live here.
If someone puts in one of these accessory units in, and it's very close, I think it's the code says you have to sprinkle it.
Yes.
Wouldn't, if it's 10 feet?
Correct.
Okay. So, that will...
Or fire rate it.
Or fire rate it, okay.
Yes, both structures.
Oh, both structures?
Both structures, right.
Well, it kind of makes sense.
Right, right. So, I don't know if, I sort of looked through this proposal from the attorney.
Right.
I have some things that I have concerns with. I don't, did you want to get into the nuts and bolts of it or?
We can, although to be honest, I haven't had, I just saw it for the first time today, so I haven't had a chance to read through it. I don't know if anybody else on the board did. Before we get to the point where we're like thinking about language, we have to do it as a public hearing, which tonight is just informational. So, I'm fine with us taking this, digesting it, reconvening, and plenty of time to put this on the town meeting, but at that point discussing specific items and language and, you know, and that sort of thing unless people had specific questions. I just had one question. Does this change at all required parking or is it the same as what we have today?
No, there is parking leniencies in the law.
Okay, because I thought so, yeah.
Yes, there is. And some of what's in here addresses that. Some of it, I feel, conflicts. So, that's why I think we need to talk about it. The short-term rental part of it, I feel strongly about the way that the suggestion came through from the attorney. The attorney references Mass General Law 64G, which has 18 sections. To me, that's an interpretive nightmare. We don't want anyone to be able to try to interpret it the way they feel they read it. So, I think we should define short-term rentals. We need to be really careful, because if you don't, the last thing we want is an Airbnb, an accessory dwelling unit, at least that's my opinion, because now you have people who aren't familiar with the property, aren't familiar with the dwelling unit, and that is a nightmare for public safety officials. So, unless that's something Dyton wants, so be it. But I think, I think if you want to keep with the single-family character of this town, then short-term rentals should not be allowed.
Any Title V requirement?
Yes, yeah, there is. Title V does not, is not exempted in any way. So, if you were to propose, or a property owner was to propose an accessory dwelling unit, 310 CMR, which is Title V, fully is applicable, meaning they either have to put a septic system in, the septic system that there would have to be vetted if it can, if it has the capacity to accept the additional flow from the dwelling unit, then so be it. If not, then upgrades would have to happen.
So, that'll be a little bit of a setback for some people.
It would.
If you think you're going to get something like quick and cheap, but then you realize you have to upgrade your septic.
Right, right.
That's a whole nother story.
It is. It is something that is actually in the building code where I'm prohibited from giving permits unless they meet the private sewage disposal requirement. So, so there are catch-halls in what we have to try to help. It's not that I want to roadblock any of this. It's law, you know, but we want to make sure that it's done properly.
Oh, cool.
It's done safely, and we don't have people living in sheds.
So, if you had an outbuilding, you could do an addition, correct?
Correct.
That was just my opinion when I said I prefer not to like go through the whole, the sample draft from the attorney and get into the weeds of this without time to digest it and then really do all of that in a public meeting where people can participate. I don't know if, I don't know if other people feel the same way or if you want to go into it tonight.
No, you guys have asked a bunch of the questions that I had, some of the septic systems was one of them.
Yeah.
The other one is the fire and the building ability within 10 feet, as well as if someone was to convert a garage, and the garage is at nine hundred square feet or less, more than 10 feet of existing dwelling now, and say it has a roof line across, he couldn't encapsulate that in a secondary, could he?
It's possible, yes, it's possible.
If they can't go jukeboard, but they can stay one block.
Right, yes, it is possible. There's some other things, and to your point, I agree. I think it should be done at a different time, because you have so many things on the agenda. But there was some discussion about garages, what do we do with garages, what do we do if someone wants to propose a garage with an accessory dwelling unit? I have some opinions on that. So, we really need to get into the weeds.
I think you mentioned a workshop. A workshop would be crucial for this.
Yeah.
And I actually would recommend a workshop to get everybody, zoning board and planning board, on the same page before we have a public meeting, so that we know exactly what this thing says and, you know, what we think the people might want or not want. And then, of course, the public is ultimately going to be the one who involves themselves and votes out of that town meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a very important part to get everybody involved.
Right.
I agree.
My biggest question is, I guess I can ask the opinion more of Jim. What's your thoughts on the way it's written involving parking?
I think it's very lenient on top of the way it's written right now.
I know, I'm not a fan of that.
No, I, you know, I would caution us to be careful because it's law, means law.
Does a public safety take over that?
It can.
That's what I was hoping.
It can, and I don't want to speak on that until I speak with the fire chief, but...
Right, absolutely.
There's no tandem parking, right?
There are, I'm sorry.
They can't tandem park.
No, no.
As it's written, the way it's written right now.
Right. So, there was a lot of discussion that needs to take place, and I want everybody at home to understand, public safety officials are not trying to interfere with what the state has said you have a right to do. It's just how do we do this responsibly? How do we make sure that, because we all know, you know, state and federal government write laws and then, oh, that was a mistake, you know? So, we want to try to think through what's on the books and what can we do to make it better and what can we do to make it more fruitful for the people who live here.
So, if you have a structure on a piece of property that doesn't meet the zoning bylaws of today, say it's 12 feet off the property line, can they put the next structure within 12 feet that's still happening out, like that the 55 feet frontage?
So, that's a great question. The way I interpret it, any new proposed structures would have to meet the current setback requirements. As you read this, you'll see that attorney, the attorney doesn't agree with that to one aspect, where insofar as that if a home is less than the, let's say, frontage requirement, they would allow the, the way it's written, the accessory structure could meet that same encroachment. I disagree with that. I don't think that should be allowed. I think that any new proposed structure on a lot should meet the setback requirements. Just because you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure that's protected under Mass General Law Chapter 40A, I don't think the new law as written extends that graciousness to a new structure that is proposed, even if it's an ADU.
So, even if not an ADU, somebody just wanted to put an addition on their house to make it larger, and it was non-conforming, you're saying that they couldn't actually do that today?
Well, maybe I should have clarified. I meant a detached structure.
Detached, okay.
An attached structure, we already have no legislature in our bylaw that allows that.
Okay.
However, a detached structure, in my opinion, should meet the setback requirements.
Right, okay, yeah.
They have to add their own electrical service for each one of these, and that's going to be shared amongst the...
It can be either way. It doesn't specify. It can either be off of the existing principal structure or it can be a new service. The power company may have an issue with a second service on the property, so that hasn't really been flushed out with utilities. They tend to frown on multiple services on one property, especially residential. So, that may get straightened out just by the utility.
Any other questions for Jim? And Carrie, you find Jim would be the ones to help pull together the workshop? Okay.
Yep, we'll do those ones here. Just fill out a date and time, and then I'll send emails out to everyone.
You know, we had to do that in a timely way so that we can wrap it up with a public hearing and have something to go for town meeting. That would mean, all of that would have to conclude by at least mid-April. So, the workshop really needs to be in February, March.
February.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, thanks, Jim.
So, the next item on our agenda, we had taken on out of order, is public hearing. TNA Realty Trust, Zero William Street, Map 21, Lot 20, special permit and definitive subdivision application. Great. If you pull it forward to the podiums, that way it can be seen on the screen. Maybe you can just give us your name and address. Oh, sorry. Do we need to stop for you to end your meeting?
They just did.
They just did, okay, sorry, okay.
Excuse me. For the record, my name's Bob Rego. I'm with Riverhawk Environmental, with the civil engineers and the surveyors for the project. So, what we have tonight in front of you is a subdivision of some land that's located off William Street. It's in the southwestern kind of portion of the town. The board that's up here kind of shows an overall picture of the site. The total site is about 80.4 acres of land. We're dividing about, we're proposing a conservation subdivision for this property, and we're really using about 39 acres of the land. What we've done is we've prepared a kind of a yield plan or a development plan per the regulations, which shows how we could fit 17 conventional lots on the site with two roadways with two access points coming off William Street. That site, that was used to establish the density for the conservation subdivision, and we did design that development plan in accordance with the regulations, where we first identified what should be protected as open space. We then identified the house locations, put the road in, and then developed the plan. So, that resulted in a closed subdivision, which is shown, and a general matrix here, which is 17 lots.
So, which is the conventional yield plan?
The conventional yield plan is down here.
We received that, Carrie? Okay.
It has two, there's frontage for the site. There's a lawn area, frontage mostly being wet.
Okay.
So, we show a road here, and then the secondary frontage here, and there's a small wetland area here too.
And the what?
250 feet of frontage?
Well, that is, I'll clarify that, because that was one of the comments we received. So, we did that yield plan, and this particular site where it's located on William Street, there is a water supply line which runs down William Street. It actually cuts across this property and serves the Hunter's Hill Development. But there is a current moratorium on land, oh, did you leave already? So, what we did when we first started designing the subdivision was I came in and I met with some of the department heads, including the building commissioner. During that meeting, I posed the question to him whether, because we were going to install a water line in the subdivision anyways, he felt that we should do that, whether we'd have to stick to the 175 feet of frontage or would we have to go to the 250 for an area without water and sewer. So, it was the commissioner's opinion, at least my interpretation of his opinion, that we could use the 175 feet of frontage and the 35,000 square feet, yeah, and 35,000 square feet of land area to develop the yield plan, because we would be putting a water line in. There's a current moratorium, but in the future, it would be stipulated that if water was made available or the moratorium was released, the water line would be in place and the homes would have to switch over to the use of the water line.
So, I don't want to jump around too mu, I mean, we don't get discussion, I don't want to jump around too much. I want to give you an opportunity to finish your presentation, and then we can go back to, but water is a big topic of discussion. And as you probably saw in the comments back that we made to West Hampton, so.
Sure. So, that's anyways, that's how we came up with the basis, and certainly we can discuss that a little more as we get to it. So, what resulted in was 17 lots. We've tried to configure the lots and the roadway, so it is the minimal impact and the minimum amount of roadway that we could create and still achieve the 17 lots. There's kind of a ridge which runs, and I can do better by pointing to it, so excuse me, but we have proposing one entrance off William Street. There is a small wetland area here, and no, we've kind of eliminated what's shown on there, the secondary road in. If we did put that roadway in, we wouldn't create any additional frontage for lots. It would just be a long area of pavement that, you know, create access. It's possible, but it's, I don't think it's the best design. So, with that, that's about 800 additional feet of roadway, again, that would be created, and there'd be no additional frontage gained on either side of the roadway for any lots. The total length of the roadway we're posing is about 1,685 feet. The cul-de-sac on the end of the roadway is 116 feet across the pavement, so it's plenty of room for emergency vehicles to turn around. The proposed pavement width, I believe, is 24 feet. And we're proposing Cape Cod berms along, excuse me, along the sides of the roadway, excuse me. The, we have limited to one access point. We evaluated that access point for stopping site distance. There's a mass DOT traffic study that had been done previously on that roadway, or it's in the mass DOT records. I'm unsure who conducted the study, but it has about a 46 mile per hour speed study, so the average speed of, or the average speed of the cars measured on the roadway was about 46 miles per hour. So, that gives you about 372-foot stopping site distance. We figured there's about more than 400 in each direction as you come out of that to see in both directions, so there should be adequate site distance at the entrance. In terms of utility and infrastructure, we talked about, we are proposing to put an eight-inch water line in with hydrants, so that would give and connect into the water mean within the roadway and William Street, but make no connect, will make, bring all the services to the property line of each lot, but no, make no connection from the curb stop to the house. And then the wells, that way we could put in hydrants. It could be fire suppression if needed, but this system would basically be dry otherwise. Or the system would not be used otherwise. It would be, it would be wet. It would be active, but not used. The 17, we are proposing wells on each of the 17 lots. We're proposing a common wastewater system, septic system, so a collection with a low pressure sewer system, denitrifying septic systems that go to a common septic area. We've done park tests in both the primary and reserve area with the Board of Health Agent present at the time, so those have all been conducted, and we have designed that as part of this package. We've included the design of the two, of the septic and reserve, the primary and reserve areas. The, all the other utilities, the electric utilities are supposed to be underground. And then finally, the stormwater management. We've designed the stormwater to, and will be reviewed by a peer reviewer, but we've designed it to meet the Mass D P Stormwater Management Standards and the Dyton bylaws. I probably should have printed the list separately, but we have asked for several waivers on the property, and I'm going to weed off this plan if you don't mind, but there's, the initial waiver dealt with an impact statement that's required by the regulations. One of the things is traffic and others on the town utilities and infrastructure. We've since gotten comments back from members of the planning board and also the consultant in the review that they felt traffic, assessment of the traffic should be done. So, we did that. We submitted a separate report on the trafficked impact assessment and also a response to the comments from members of the planning board on the other impacts. The next big one, which is the dead-end street, 600 feet is supposed to be the maximum length. We are looking for, for an increase to 1,685 feet from the 600. And again, that's based on the design of the roadway and kind of going with that conservation subdivision and proposing a road with a minimal impact for proposing. The rest, most of the rest, I believe, deal with the stormwater. There's a requirement to have all subsurface infiltration basins or stormwater management, so we're proposing to use above-ground or open basins as part of our solution. Those open basins are basically along locations where it's currently fairly large wetland areas, so I don't believe it'll be... So I don't believe it'll be much different than the adjacent wetland area in terms of the impact. They are designed to drain dry and be open basins that are not filled with water. There's a requirement for three feet deep depth of a basin. In order to, if we made them three feet, they would be much larger. We're requesting five feet as a total depth, so we're able to make the footprint a little smaller by making them deeper. So we are requesting a reduction from three feet or an increase from three feet to five feet. There's stuff about, discussion about a channel and a center grade and stuff, we're asking for a waiver on that. It's a fairly technical requirement. We're asking for a waiver from that, which I think maybe will be addressed by the reviewer. And it's more appropriate, we're designing infiltration basins in accordance with the mast D P guidance. So this is really not an appropriate way to design those basins. Next one deals with slope of the bottom of a basin. Again, infiltration basins is supposed to have as flat as possible bottoms, so that's what we're proposing. And there's a two percent requirement in your regulations. Side slopes, she'll have a one to five slope, a one vertical for five feet horizontal side slopes. So we're in basins and again, stormwater basins only. So we're requesting a three to one and that again allows us to make the land area we use for the basin smaller than if we had flatter side slopes. Storm drains should have three feet of cover. So at one location down by the roadway, I can best show this. Basically, down at the roadway. And it's, this is like north to, well, yeah, I guess that's what shows this right there. Basically, we have William Street, where the proposed roadway intersects William Street. It's the low point of the site, so the whole site tends to drain down. We've, well, from about a high point here in the roadway drains down. So for us to get the water into the basin and have it in a catch basin, by the time you put the rim of the catch basin and the top of the catch basin and you put the pipe in, it's tough to achieve three feet of cover and still get it into the basin without making it very deep. So we're, we're requesting two feet of cover as opposed to three feet of cover at that location. But we're using a pipe that's suitable to, to. To handle the traffic loads with, with only two feet of cover. We're requ- instead of, it says for utilities, all easements should be thirty feet wide. We're requesting a reduction from thirty to twenty, which is more typical. Again, just to minimize the lot sizes are not huge, they're, they're pretty big, but just to give the homeowners a little more land and take up less in easements around a pipe. And then the final waiver that we're asked for is the, the regulations require a twenty-five foot property line radius. So that's right here. So we still maintain a twenty-five foot pavement radius, but we're asking for a reduction to sixteen feet. And that allowed us to push the whole road a little further to the north and maintain a greater distance away from the border vegetated by, which is right here. So that, so it still gives you the twenty-five feet for a vehicle, just a little less of the property line. And those are, those are all the waivers, so I believe that's the end of what I had.
Okay. So I think you already saw this, some initial feedback from both myself and from Jeff Gavolos, our chairman, who wasn't here tonight. But regardless, we still haven't gotten anything back from peer review. And you haven't seen anything back from peer review for you to respond to. So, you know, this is really an opportunity for us to actually discuss it, but this will obviously result in a continuance because we can't make a decision without getting those peer review comments back. But just a couple of those things that have been called out initially is, one is this being proposed as a conservation subdivision? And our bylaw requires that a minimum of twenty percent of the total acreage be set aside as open space, of which not more than twenty-five percent can be wetlands. The conservation commission would obviously have to weigh in on delineating the wetlands and coming up with the exact amount. But just upon the notes that you had on your plan, it looked like there was eighty point four acres, which means a minimum of sixteen acres of open space, which you meet. But with a maximum out of that of only four acres of wetland and therefore twelve of dry. And just upon that, it looks like you were only having, you were having forty acres, forty-one acres of open space, but only six of wet. So, I'm sorry, eight of dry and thirty-five of wet. So it didn't, at least on those numbers, didn't really meet our requirement for a conservation subdivision because too much of the wetlands would be included in the open space. Yeah, sure.
So we did have five of inter-rat with the abbreviated notice of this area delineation with the conservation person, they issued a rat for that. And what we did was we delineated the wetlands on the front portion of the property. So that includes this area here and all of the several wetland resources, but we only delineated to that point on the product. And it's tough to see on this one, but what we're doing or proposing is giving a lot more open space than we need to. So we can solve that problem about the way the regulation's written is, it says twenty-five percent of the open space provided, right? So we don't meet that, but alls we have to do is cut off the back part of the land that we don't need to meet the area requirements and that we assume to be all a hundred percent wetlands. And then we'd meet that twenty-five percent, if that makes sense.
So you'd reduce the total lot acreage?
We'd reduce the total lot acreage, yeah, from eighty to like fifty and then we'd meet the, the open space requirements. Upland percentage requirements. So it'd kind of be not the best thing because there'd be less open space provided, but we'd meet the intent or the letter of the regulation, we'd meet, we'd meet the regulation.
Okay, so, I mean, we would have to see what does the new design look like, obviously, but as long as it's, I mean, first conservation subdivision, that's not an item we have legal remon, so it would have to meet that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we could cut it off, it would be a Form A, it would be a division of that land, it would be land that's unbuildable, landlocked.
Well, a Form A can include landlocked property. Not sure how that would work, if you break it off into a separate.
You can subdivide land as long as you're not creating frontage. You can, you can cut off an unbuildable parcel to be joined with others.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I don't think as a Form A is the right vehicle to do that, I'm not sure whether it's the right vehicle, but whatever, okay.
Yeah, well, it's division of land, you have to do it under a Form C or Form A and it would be formatted.
Form A, okay. So the second part is, I only, and maybe I didn't look through the material provided correctly. I only saw one scenario for usage, which, and so we would require the conventional and then your proposed. And I was only seeing one set of plans, so are they both in there?
And I'm not sure, you can tell me a little bit, this was the, the plan that was submitted. We call the proposed yield plan was meant to follow the requirements.
All the conventional requirements, okay. By the way, the, when you were talking with the, reference talking to the building commissioner earlier, I was obviously part of that conversation, I'm not sure what was said. But my interpretation, and this is our chairman's as well, we can get clarification on it, is the reduced frontage for water means that you have a water supply to the house for use. Not it's running down the street for a fire hydrant. So you would, in that scenario, have to be back to the two hundred and fifty required feet of frontage.
Who, who makes that interpretation? That's a zoning bylaw.
That is a zoning bylaw.
He's the chief zoning enforcement officer.
He reports to us, so I would say it's.
He reports to you or he report?
Yes. I would say that is our interpretation, we have an attorney, you know, with the town, he can help us clarify that. But as I'm reading it, that is what is required, it's water supply, meaning drinking water.
I, I'd have to disagree about who's supposed to interpret the zoning bylaw, the zoning commissioner or the planning board?
Well, we can have that discussion with our attorney, but at the moment, we're arguing that it's the planning board. But we would have to have the conventional yield plan show that. You might wanna wait on doing that, obviously, you don't wanna put the money into doing that until we get this issue clarified. But, and as I said, I don't know what was presented to Jim and his opinion on it at that time, but, but that is an open issue, so.
Okay, sure, understood, yeah.
Let's see, you had mentioned about the, let's see, this is why we already covered that. This was a comment from our chairman, you, in the back of each lot, you had had the, the private wells for drinking water. There was a scallop shape that was appearing and we weren't quite sure whether that was a sign of a tree line or?
Tree line, yeah.
Okay.
So I can show you this standard. This is broken out because of the scale, it's broken out into multiple sheets, but with the start of the first one. I did, this is the line, so that's a proposed tree line, which we just quickly drawn it. And some of the wells are shown beyond the, beyond the tree line.
Okay.
And the intent would be to put that well in and disturb as little as possible of that overall tree line. And we can, we can change it so it goes around that.
I think he was just concerned, he obviously has a private drinking well, he knows that there's a clearance section around it and it just, it was.
You just have to put the well in with a rig and then get it watered on back to the house. So then we do some, some of these areas shown on the tree line, there's not even trees there now, it's kind of a future, you know, where that tree will be.
That's the conventional subdivision?
This is, this is, this is the proposed.
Conservation?
Yes.
What is the frontage draws on that?
It varies, I could tell you, yeah, I didn't even print out the quote before I said, but they're fairly large. I mean, they're, they're greater than a hundred, I believe they only require fifteen by conservation, but they're all much greater than that.
So you're also doing a one septic system for the entire thing?
That's correct, yes. But that's what's proposed.
When you submitted, when you showed the conventional subdivision?
Yeah.
Does it show a hundred and seventy-five feet, which I really don't know if I agree with that because you don't have a water supply?
It does show, that was based, that conventional yields was.
Does it show the setbacks, the wetlands? Does it show the one hundred by a hundred square foot area? It shows all of that and you meet all of that?
Yes.
On it, okay.
Yeah, it shows all of those things, it does not show two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, it shows a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage.
That's what I was mentioning, we were just talking about, that we'll have to iron out and.
Yeah, I, I'm not so sure that I agree with the hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage. When there is no water supply, that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah.
The one thing that I.
Since you are running water down the street to service the fire hydrants, did you give thought to just expanding it or using rather than PVC, something that's, you know, you know, human gradable so that they could provide water? Knowing, of course, there is a moratorium, you know, but at least down the road, it would be possible to supply drinking water via that route?
That, oh, yeah, that would be the intent, it would be an eight-inch main and the intent would be if the moratorium was lifted, the water would be connected.
I did see that you had mentioned, and maybe this was just like, it was meant as a note, not as a permanent comment, but it said PVC. And I, I'm not on the water commission, but I don't think PVC can be used for human water.
Well, it's C nine hundred blue brewed and it can be used. It's, it's CPVC and yeah, it can be used for water lines, so some communities allow it, I'm unsure if Dyton does, but if they don't, we could, we could switch it to concrete line, ductile line. But yeah, the intent is to use that in the future for water, yes.
Let's see, some of the other comments here. You mentioned the, the traffic and those sort of few other things. There was a comment about plans for phasing, I assume this is not phasing the development?
Oh, phasing, yeah, you know, I'm unknown, we, we don't know at this point how they'll proceed with the subdivision, so we're unsure how, whether it'll be sold as one big subdivision to a builder who might build them in one year or whether it'll be phased over several years. So that, that's kind of unknown at this point. But if we had to say, it would be built in one year.
Okay, so this is being proposed with a builder yet to be determined? This is, this is laid out as a plan?
Well, it's the landowner and developer and he's unsure whether he's gonna sell the project as, as one big project or whether he's gonna build them up.
Okay. The next was the issue of the dead-end street. So you had mentioned the request for a waiver, but at the same time, you mentioned a request for a waiver on the side slopes. So there's a concern about for a street that long, emergency access vehicles, they have to get around, you know, should there be a blockage in the road, they have to build, there's no secondary route of access. So the fact that you're increasing the slopes and the idea of a heavy vehicle moving around, it's just, it can't be such that it's an obstacle.
Sure, yeah, that request for a waiver was only for the stormwater basins. The side slope requirement in the Dyton subdivision control regulations, it's a two-to-one fill slope and a three-to-one cut slope. So we're proposing greater than that or flatter slopes than that in all cases.
Okay.
So it's only in the basins and that's to limit the size of the basins and the closest basin. That, that's sixty feet away from the paved surface and that is where we're requesting a size reduction in this area, not, not adjacent to the roadway. And then the other basin is located further away from the street at a, at a further distance, I don't know what that is, like two hundred feet. So, so we're not, that's where we're here, we are flatter, slide slopes in this place.
You said that there was a, an eight-inch pipe or gonna be an eight-inch pipe or that there is one feeding Hunter's Hill?
Yeah, there's, there's. Trying to find the best plan that shows that location. And I don't, I don't know the size of the pipe, but I do know that it comes down here, if you can see this, it's pretty small, but it goes through this wetland area and around those old roadway and it comes around and it serves Hunter's Hill. So that's how Hunter's Hill gets its wide, there's a main William Street and it connects over here to those.
So there is a main on William Street and who put that in?
The developers of Hunter's Hill.
Is there any fire hydrants? Where is the last fire hydrant?
This is, this is all the fire hydrants laid out.
That, that are in?
Oh, I thought you meant that are in, in existing on William, you mean, or exist proposal?
Yeah, the existing one.
Oh, existing, I don't know, okay.
I don't know, I believe, what next? I don't know if there's fire hydrants in Hunter's Hill something, but I believe there's a fire hydrant right here on William Street. There, there's a fire hydrant right here on William Street. And there on William Street, so they do run down William Street. And those were probably put in.
It's kind of interesting that there would be fire hydrants, but no part of, you know, water.
There is water, it's there, there's water.
The moratorium, Joe.
There's a moratorium.
I know there's a moratorium, but when was this put in? Moratorium hasn't been on.
Yeah, they put their water in for Hunter's Hill.
I, I, I helped design that project probably 25 years ago when I was at a different company.
But the system was not put in at that time?
Yeah, sure it was, yeah. There's, there's 35 homes in there. They serve by public water. They're going to put, they're in the process now of installing a bunch more, right, long-built homes.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the last item, which you've already touched on, is there significant wetlands? I think it's all drains kind of like from east to west towards, towards William, as you say.
Yeah, there's actually, I'm looking best again, you know, because of the scale
of the mains, it's kind of, it's easier to show on here, but. But there's a wetland system here on the, on the eastward part of the site, and then there's a big wetland system over here on the west. There's kind of a ridge which runs along this road, so all of the water does drain from, from here to there, from the roadway, you know, towards the wells, at each side of the road.
Okay, so obviously you're going to be going before Conservation Commission because there's a significant wetland area here. Stormwater, which Weston and Sampson's going to weigh in on, we also have the chairman here this evening of our stormwater committee. We're going to be looking for their comments. I'm sure Conservation Commission's going to be asking for their comments as well.
Sure, sure.
Historically, we just had a lot of issues with water drainage in town, and we just want to make sure that there's no, with the removal of the vegetation and the trees in the proposed build area, that there's no, you know, spillover effect of increased drainage into Butters' properties across the road and, you know.
Sure, sure.
Onto the side, so.
Yeah, we, we, we'll, you know, that'll be the, the hard part of this development with any development is the stormwater, but it'll be thoroughly reviewed by Weston and Sampson, and there, there will be no, no spillover onto the adjacent properties. You know, there's such significant wetlands on both sides that, you know, none of that water will, will reduce the rate certainly and of runoff to the wetlands, and we'll meet all the stormwater management standards in terms of infiltration, you know, volume, rate of runoff will.
So again, as I said, we obviously haven't seen the comments back from Weston and Sampson. Those are the initial comments that came forward from the planning board? I don't know if people have questions tonight based upon the presentation? No? Okay, so, no, Carrie, I was supposed to open this whole thing up as a public meeting, and I didn't. We just jumped right into it.
Let's make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, so.
I'll start over.
That's, yeah, no.
Can we make a motion to open and close at the same time?
You don't want to close it yet.
Oh.
We're going to continue.
Continue.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to open tonight's, Jeff is going to kill me for this, make a motion to open this discussion for a public meeting?
Someone.
No, second? Second. We've heard the presentation. The members of the board have been given the opportunity to ask questions. Any public input or comments, questions at this time?
Nancy Golat, chairman of the stormwater committee. In listening to this presentation, have the wetlands been flagged yet?
Yes, the wetlands have been flagged.
So the Kong Kong has approved that part as far as the buffer zones and the no-touch zones and all that other stuff?
They have, they've approved the location.
Okay, the total acreage we're talking about is in excess of 80?
Currently as, as proposed, yes.
And the acreage that will have buildings, homes on it is?
39.
39? So will the rest of the property be open space?
That was our intent.
It would be. Not, not very dry.
No, I understood what you was saying.
But yes, open space.
About five acres of open space.
Is the top, topography of this land relatively, I don't want to say flat, but what's it like? I know, I know Hunter's Hill, and I know basically what that is. Is it a continuation of the way Hunter's Hill is?
I'm not sure how, but I can show you.
Well, it doesn't have really high hills. We only have one really high hill in town.
No, it's not high. It's not high. It's, let's see, I'll look this one here, but basically, I'll show you, there's a ridge that runs kind of through here, through the center point of the site.
Is that square, excuse me, is that square there where the house is going to go?
No, this square is another property.
Oh, okay.
This is not part of the site.
All right, so your land goes behind that?
Around.
Okay.
Yep, so that is the elevation of there anyway, here at the high point, and it goes all the way down to, let's say, 119. So there's 20 feet of elevation.
All right, so it's not, it's not steep, steep. It's, it's a gradual type.
Right, right.
Tuckoff.
We're proposing roadways that have an inclination of about. You know, 4% is the steepest part, which is relatively flat, and a lot of it being 1% or 1%.
Okay, you talked about the basins, and obviously I know what the town requires for basins. What you're describing is not a basin, it's a pit. So that's period. What I will say to you is, and this will all depend upon what the town's engineers say. Weston and Sampson are the towns' engineers, and when they go in and look at a project, they look at everything. So when they issue a report, it's going to address planning, concerns and conservation and stormwater. So the proponents don't have to deal with multiple engineers, and we end up with one report so that we all know across the board what each committee board is required and what's, what their recommendations are. The stormwater committee is made up of seven members. Each major board and our commission has a representative. From the planning board, it's Mr. Woods on the end. And I can tell you, the stormwater committee has only granted one in the history of this committee, which has been around since, I think, 2018. We have only granted one. I call it a pit, and that's only because the location of the property is on the highest point in town. It's very steep. It's rocky, and the only way that this building, it's not housing, building could be accommodated was to grant that one to three that you're talking about, three to one. And that was based on the recommendations of Weston and Sampson. So I just say to you, if you have available space that could be used as an infiltration basin, it's what the town prefers, but the recommendations of the town engineer is really going to be what will influence what the stormwater committee does, because that's why we've got them on board.
Now, you say infiltration. These are infiltration basins in accordance with the Mass D E P definition?
No question about that.
Right, but when you say infiltrate, you mean subsurface infiltration? So there's no.
I mean, something, as a matter of, I've seen an infiltration basin as big as that field out there.
Yeah.
Okay, and it has the sides grassy, and it has a long, flat bottom, and it has the, the little, I call it the stone at the end, that lets it, if it gets a certain level, it overflows. That was in Middleborough. But also in Middleborough, the engineer we, we took us to, took us to a site, a housing development. That's where I saw what a pit was. And that's why when somebody says it's a basin and it complies with Mass D E P, I don't question that. The waiver you're going to be looking for is from this town. And I'm just saying, only one has ever been granted, and it's going to depend on what Weston and Sampson recommends when they look at the space available and what would be closest in design to meet the requirements of the town, okay? So stormwater is not a big problem per se, only because everyone works together and because of the engineering services we have, which we rely on extensively. Now, it was, in looking at the site I'm referring to, we were down to no more options. Conversely, we've actually had a solar farm that had a basin that for many, many reasons didn't work. It is still a combination infiltration basin, but they had to dig it up and put pipes in it and create a drainage system in it. But that's an aside. So I just want you to know, pretty much everything stormwater does is going to follow what the other boards do, and again, the recommendations of Weston and Sampson.
Okay, sure.
So, okay.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carrie, so, maybe I was confused. So we have received, he said it's already been flagged by conservation. Have we received that information?
The wetlands have been confirmed by the Kong Kong.
Okay, so we have that information. We can, if we're trying to figure out acreages, percent wetlands, percent dry, we have all that data available to us?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the question is a continuance? I will say that as long as, if you're pursuing this as a conserv.
Might want to open up to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did ask, anybody have a question or?
Anyone from the public?
No, okay. As long as you're pursuing this as a conservation subdivision, the requirements are, you know, no more than 20% of the open space can be wet. So to the extent that we have a continuance and you come back and you still have an 80-acre proposed lot that doesn't meet that, we're just kind of spinning our wheels. So I want to, we can take a motion for a continue. I just don't want to push it out one month if you feel that that's not going to reasonably get you to the point where you have a, a plan that you can come back to that helps us.
We'll just show a portion of this land cut off in the back on, on this Form C plan, which is a division of land, which we can, as an unavailable lot, it won't be part of the project. We'll give it to the abutter or we'll keep it, and we can proceed.
Okay, so, and we can expect Weston and Sampson's comments back probably within a week or two, so you'd be good to.
My only comment is that will result in less open space.
We don't have, it's not even something we can waive if we wanted to.
Yeah, but it's, I believe that's interpretation.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
It's flat, X percent open, 25% wet.
Less open space, no problems.
I mean, what you choose to do with that secondary lot, as you said, in a butter, the town, keep it for yourself, still quit open. It's just carved out as a separate lot.
No, no problem.
So, somebody want to make a motion for a continues to our next meeting, which is going to be, as I stated, or February?
I would say, and I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, we could go to the meeting after that.
The meeting after that.
I'm not going to be here on February 5th. I'm going to be in Florida, and I don't think by the time we get Weston and Sampson comments back.
And you have a chance to reply and review.
Yeah, we have a chance to reply that, that that's enough time to.
So what is our next meeting after February 5th?
That will be February 19th.
Does that work? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to continue this to our February 19th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion granted. So we'll get those comments back and we'll pick this up again on February 19th.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Now, okay. The next item is to discuss Hunter Hill subdivision, map 21 lots 8, 9, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 68, 73, 74, 75, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 121, and 130, and map 22 lots 6-02, B5, 86, 87, and 90, cost of complete construction proposal.
Good evening. Lee Castigny, representing L B H Hunter's Hill LLC, which is a ownership entity that is wholly owned by Long Built Homes. The Sampson, Weston and Sampson had submitted a, led their response letter, and we did the calculation here from just in hand, from the letter, that we had submitted initially to initiate the process. Then added a 10%, and it was the total. So that, that would be. The total that we would be proposing consistent with Weston and Sampson's letter, which is similar to what we did with Boxwood Lane. We had added an additional 10%. And then they had put up, you know, some cents on it, and I just rounded it up to the nearest dollar, so.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I don't think it has.
No, okay. So we're, the motion would be to accept the, as, as proposed by Weston and Sampson?
Yeah, so you're going to do the motion to accept the.
Construction proposal?
Sure, the surety amount.
Cost of complete, yes.
Okay, so anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Thank you very much.
So I have the, I have this in two counterparts signed by Bob Wong for the, for the applicant petitioner, and that's the release form that was approved by Town Council. Both, actually both documents approved by Town Council. Looks like my timing is pretty good. Looks like my timing is. Sometimes you get lucky.
Don't do that, man.
You did, and I thank you for that. Just one?
Oh, no, you got it.
Okay.
I'll not arise the other one.
Perfect, yeah, perfect, thanks.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set.
Have a good night.
Good night, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Richard Salvi, 2870 County Street, map 24 lot 32-a, Form A application.
Hello.
Hi.
My wife and I would like to.
Could you just give your name and address just for the, just give your name and address for the record?
Richard Salvi, 2870 County Street, Titan, Mass.
Thank you.
My wife and I would like to convey a piece of our land to our neighbors Nicole and Rick. It's all drawn out on that piece of paper.
Can you speak on the mic a little bit?
We have, we have it all engineered and we gave it to, that's what we'd like to do. We have, we have nine acres, so we'll have nine acres left, but we want to give some of this to our neighbor.
Very nice of you.
Well, no, they're going to, they're going to pay for it.
So I did review it. You have the, I did review the application. You have the required frontage. It is on a public way, which are the two requirements for a Form A. Your engineer updated the plan with the required verbiage that we have requested to be on there about, you know, you know, that our approval of the Form A is not necessarily acknowledgement about how buildable the lot is or anything else. That's all has to do with the building commissioner and conservation and should you ever go down that route in the future. But I don't know if anybody had questions about the Form A? No?
Have you spoken to an engineer or anything like that?
He did all, he did all, it's all been designed and drawn out. Prime engineer and did it all.
That's it, right there.
She has the, she has the plans.
I have the full-size plans here. That's what you're looking, you want to see a full-size?
Yeah, no, I'd like to see. Okay, I see something. Yeah, no, I'd like to see, okay, I see something. Yeah, prime engineer and did that. Jason Rashet.
So I think the only comment we had, and this was probably to the new owners, which is that at least according to the town G I S map, it does look very wet. So then should you ever pursue building on it, there's challenges, but that's not for the decision of the board to not, we're not doing anything along those lines. We're just saying you can or cannot have a Form A, which is to divide it off, so.
Where's the frontage to it?
County Street.
On county.
Right, but.
290, 290 feet.
290 feet? You have a, a house on this now or no?
Yes, he lives over here.
Oh, he lives over here, so he wants.
That's vacant right now.
Okay, all right. No more questions for me. I hadn't looked at anything, so.
I have, I have a hard time hearing you guys.
Sorry. Did, did someone, where there's a public input, did somebody, did you want to speak up or did you just have a question?
These are our neighbors, these are the people who want to get it.
All right.
They're awfully quiet neighbors.
They are.
They have a phone.
Those are the best guys.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, guys have it. So we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
He said he's getting, he's having gifts. He said, I'm getting money, it's not a gift. I actually, because I was a little concerned about it at first because of all the wetlands. So here is it. No, that's the development. I printed off a map that showed where it is. Maybe not. Yeah, I don't know, I didn't drive by. I did not. I'm not sure where on county, like how far down it is.
How far down is that? Whereabouts is that?
How far down county is that? Ask Woody. Woody, he's asking how far down county street is this? Joe's asking how far down county street is this?
Is what?
This piece of property.
Whereabouts is this property?
This property? This guy tells us.
That's it.
It's off of 138.
It goes all the way down.
Oh.
You know how it goes all the way down to the road?
I see some.
Somebody said that. Your property goes all the way down to 138? The property goes all the way down? Yeah.
It goes a long way.
Kind of like Steve Dominick goes, his goes all the way. His actually goes a long way. Huh?
Where were you? Where'd you leave off?
It's not like you're mowing it or anything. Do you? Okay.
Go out there with a metal detector, you'll find all his money. He's got in tin coffee cans everywhere. He had, he had tin cans full of change.
Me? No. No, no relatives around here.
Can't take it away from her. Take it away from you. I wanted to make another collection at home.
Yeah, right near there is Epsom. You know Epsom?
We got one more, huh?
Two.
Robert Perry.
I've been there. I've been there.
Record it and then just pre, you're recording the seat.
The next item on the agenda is Robert Perry Development Impact Fee Research Proposal. So Mr. Perry wasn't able to make it this evening. But I don't think, he presented last time we met, so I don't think there was any additional information we were looking for from him. We were hoping to get some input from Mr. Aguirre, unfortunately he had to leave early. But again, this is not a proposal to come up with a bylaw, to make any recommendations for a bylaw. It's just a fact finding mission to go out to see what other towns have done, what options are available, what's been successful, not successful, and report back to us and potentially back to the Board of Selectmen. I did get feedback from the chairman Jeff Gavalo. He supported it. So I don't know if people still have questions about this or if they're okay with Mr. Perry just being, going off, you know, in our name. But doing a fact finding and coming back to report his findings to us.
I don't have any issues, I mean, it's information.
It's information, yeah.
I don't like it.
I, I, I talked to Jim about it a little bit, just to see what he knew about it. And he told me he was going to look into it and, and get more information, but he did say the money that's generated from impact fees can only be used for certain things. It's like it can't go into general fund, it has to be used for, and, and I don't want to be quoted as saying the wrong thing, but it has to be used for certain things.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's some confusion because the term gets used for a lot of things or for multiple things. There's what is a true impact fee, which is, can only be used for direct betterment of the development that is generating the fee. I think that's like a classic.
Yeah.
And towns currently have that ability, just as a bylaw, it's under the law, they can do that. And then there's what's sometimes referred to as a, I forget the name now. Impact fee study. I'm forgetting the, the other name, but there's, many towns have done this, which is they can petition the state to give them permission to raise fees. It kind of works the same as it been, and that can be used for more community wide impact. Things like traffic, capital improvements, things that.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, things that are going to be tied to the fact that there's additional roads and housing and, you know, populations of use of services, but that are not necessarily in that specific area. It's not like you're widening a road sort of thing. It's more community distributed. And that has to only be granted by the state on a town by town level, you have to petition. But there's like a dozen or more cities and towns that have done that successfully. And yeah, so that, and it can be for a wide variety of things, it's just whatever you request and what the state approves. And the one I looked at was Chelsea, Mass. They have this laundry list of all the things they can use it for, capital improvement, schools, roads, you know, on and on and on, pretty much every service in the town that, you know, they can. So it's not specifying it goes to the general fund because it can't be used for salaries kind of thing. But yeah, it depending, it can be pretty wide in terms of how it can be distributed, but.
Okay. I don't have any problem at all with Mr. Perry do his research.
Does somebody want to make a motion to accept the proposal to technically appoint Bob Perry to do this information?
I'll make that motion.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, guys have it. And our last item for this evening is need to come up with a proposed budget request for 2026. Carrie, not to put you on the spot, do you want to explain the, you came up with this for most part, what has changed, if anything?
Sure. So we've been requested by the town administrator and the selectmen to reduce our budgets, I believe by two and a half percent, so that we can, in the hopes that we can have a nice fiscal year, so to speak. I did the best I could to drop it to the two and a half percent, but we already have a pretty.
Wing?
Yeah, it's, it's, our, our budget is pretty simple already, so there wasn't many places to cut. I did remove the overtime line, 51, 31. We never use it. There was $500 in there. Never use it. And then what I did was I also dropped the communications line from 170 to 100. Again, same thing, it was in something that, we use that for postage. So a lot of times when you have a subdivision that's approved and you could, you time, or any decision that's time stamped, all the abutters are required to get notified by the town, so that's what that postage is for. Obviously, we haven't had too much to hit that line, so knock on wood, we don't have it the following year. The other one was, forgive me, the public hearings line. We did, I did drop that to, by 200. Typically, the public hearings line is that our legal notification that goes in the legal ad, and every time we have a bylaw, we have a public hearing, we have to publicize it in the newspaper two times a week. An average of each publication for the two prints is about 350, give or take. We do have several anticipated zoning bylaws going into effect, but I was able to clarify that we can do it as one art, as one.
Posting.
One posting, thank you. So I think we'll be okay with that. And then other than that, we, I did, just so you know, for the Serpide assessment, that's actually determined by Serpide and they do a vote. And obviously, we don't have that vote yet. The maximum they can do is a two and a half percent. So I did do.
What do they do for us exactly?
I can't answer that. That's, I'm looking at the budgets. Serpide is something that Jeff goes to and you're a representative there, so I think you're fully aware of what Serpide does. But what I did was, since their maximum to increase, which they have done the last two years, was two and a half percent. So I put the two and a half percent in there. Hopefully, they'll be gracious and not be that much, but we'll see. So I won't know until then. Other than that, I'd be very wary about cutting anything else.
Did you cut professional, technical?
The profi-, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Hundred bucks or something?
Yes, the professional, technical, I went from 12,500 to 10,500. And if you look at the expenditures that we've done right now, we haven't done that many.
And you said that's primary, not exclusively primarily, that covers legal fees?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and it would be, and I'd like to, it would be more legal fees that are, if, actually, it would be legal fees if, for our zoning bylaw, for his review.
Okay.
It also would be for if a applicant goes on appeal and it goes to court. That doesn't come out of their 53G account, it has to come out of our own professional and technical line. So a lot of the times the legal fees that we have right now are under, falls under the 53G accounts, which is why you don't see our accounts getting hit. Since we didn't use that much, I thought that we'd be okay doing the 10,500. Because this, this expenditure right now is, um, forgive me, I'm getting lost in thought here. So my, our remaining budget is 12,400. Our actual expenditures as of 12, 31 was only $100. So I thought we'd be okay with the 10,500.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the budget as proposed? Somebody want to make a motion that we submit this as our proposed budget for fiscal year 2026?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Next item is approval of meeting minutes for December 18th. Anybody have any questions about those? Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any correspondence?
No.
Any public input?
When you talk about Serpide, is the assessment that's sent to the planning board, does it cover the entire town or are any other committees assessed?
I think the Board of Selectmen must be too, because I'm the representative for the Board of Selectmen. I'm not sure if they bill them or not.
It's one assessment.
And it's only the planning board that gets the bill? Okay. I will say this, in the past, when I was a selectman, when Bill Polatano was still, he's retired, when he was at Serpide, there were times we called on him for traffic studies and different studies. And we were fortunate that they had grant money, so we didn't pay to have the studies done. I can think of the stoplight at Main Street that we repeatedly tried to get. But I know there were traffic studies that Serpide did for the town and they paid them because they had grants. But there were other studies they did, and they also helped us with, when we were filing the notice of intent, which is, we're in a, we just filed last year, the sixth one, so we're in our seventh year. And the notice of intent is the 10-year plan that gets filed with the EPA for stormwater over the next 10 years. But they did work with us on that because we needed information about the Taunton River and what the pollutants are and all this other stuff. So we did get those services too. But again, I don't know who his replacement is and I haven't been in the need of those kinds of services. So that's what we got, that I know of in the past.
Right, there's a gentleman there, his name is Frank King.
Oh, he was there when Bill was there.
Yeah, he also was in the town department too.
Oh.
And he, he has a big role there. He's basically the new bill.
Okay.
And he's a very nice fellow.
Um, I want to assume, um, any other items that anyone needs to bring up? We have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn? Thank you, cable.